Made of.
What was that? Councilman Barone, are you on?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I am right here.
Wonderful. All right, we'll go ahead and get started on the Regional Transportation Commission.
Thank you, Vice Chair Jones and members of the Commission. Your first item is to conduct your first citizen's participation period.
Thank you, M.J. This is the first time set aside for public comment. This time is limited to comments on items included on the agenda. Those wishing to speak on a posted agenda item now is your opportunity. Please come forward to the microphone to provide your comments and state your name for the record. Do we have any comments?
Thank you, Chair Justin Jones. Alida Dupree for the record, she and her. I request your leave to speak if the time is appropriate on this Maryland Parkway corridor. So, I need a clock here. And I'm just getting into learning about TOD here in Las Vegas. I hear a lot about it in a lot of other agencies. BART in the Bay Area talks about it a lot. And I've been riding Maryland Parkway in some way or another, be it bus or driving, for about 20 years. And I would like to see a more walkable and bus-able and bike-able Maryland Parkway. It gets congested and there are some places with deep ridges and potholes from heavy tires, perhaps some grates, sewer grates, things that can trap bicycle wheels. Hopefully someday we'll get a light rail there. But I live in the heart of the city, not real close to here. But I used to have a suburban history. But I like being in the heart of the city, especially given that I don't have a car. I choose not to have a car. I think I've done pretty well. But I would like for my stores and businesses to be closer together. So even though I don't live on the Maryland Parkway corridor, I think it can certainly be an example that we could take to other corridors such as Sahara, where I live, and Charleston, where I'm close to. Because more people are going to come here. And I don't think the answer is in sprawl. I think we should still acquire land for our land bank. We don't want to be constrained. But I think the answer is to be closer in. So I'm certainly going to read this over. And there's a lot of organizations partnering in this. But I believe the answer is in reasonable density. I don't think we have to be as tight as New York or San Francisco. But it costs an average of $700 a month to keep a car in the United States. And for many, that can be more. And you multiply that by two or even three. Well, then it can get to the point where it exceeds the income of some people of lower income. So I'm looking forward to hearing about this today and learning about it. Because I believe that we should have a more bike-able and bus-able and walk-able and hopefully someday a light rail on Maryland Parkway will make it easier for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, anyone else in the audience wishing to provide public comment? If not, with the rise in COVID-19 cases in Clark County, the RTC is temporarily accepting public comments via email to be read aloud by staff. Are there any public comments to be read by staff?
There are no comments for this period.
Thank you. With that, we'll go ahead and close the public comment period. I'll turn it back to M.J.
Thanks, Vice Chair. The next item is to approve your agenda. It's in order and ready for your approval.
Great. Any questions or concerns with regards to the agenda? Hearing none, I'll accept the motion.
So, moved.
All right, all those in favor? Aye.
Barone, aye.
Any opposed? Right, motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is to receive your CEO report. And I'd like to begin today's CEO report by updating you that the Asian Community Development Council, otherwise known as ACDC, recognized Angela Castro, RTC's Chief Strategy, Marketing and Policy Officer during its inaugural Inspiration Gala last week. That's right. Angela? ACDC honored eight individuals as trailblazers within the community. And I can't think of anyone more fitting or deserving of this honor than Angela. For those of you who know her, she's a mighty force. Let me say that again. She is a mighty force to be reckoned with and has served the agency for more than 10 years. She has a well-deserved reputation for getting things done. I mean, she gets it done. It's amazing. She's amazing. And she's really a big believer in giving back to her community. She has long supported ACDC's efforts in providing much-needed services to the Asian-American and Pacific Autochre community here in Southern Nevada. So please join me in congratulating Angela. I also want to recognize our Associate General Counsel, David Clyde, for being named one of Mass Transit's 40 Under 40 this year. David has been with the RTC since 2013 and played a key role in numerous high-party projects, legislative rights and legal issues. He keeps us legal, keeps us in the straight and narrow. He has already achieved an impressive amount at a young age. And we are very fortunate to have his strategic thought leadership at the RTC. I'm looking forward to seeing what more he will do in his career. Congratulations, Dave. Where are you, Dave? And next, we have an outstanding driver we'd like to recognize. Sean Parsons is an operator from our contractor MV. And Francis has a video.
Thank you, M.J. Today, we're celebrating two operators. The first one is from MV Transportation. His name is Sean Parsons. Once again, exceptional driver. He's been cadetting and training for over seven years over at MV. And Sean, as he was driving, saw a young woman in distress, took her inside the bus, called the authorities. And she was then in a safe heaven. So once again, thanks so much, Sean, for all you do. And I'll have our Fixed Route Manager of Mobility present him with the Crystal Bus.
Hey, Sean.
Hey, how's it going?
Good.
All right.
Hey, on behalf of the RTC, we're here to surprise you with our Crystal Bus for helping a young girl access a safeless location a couple months ago. Thanks for your dedication and compassion.
Oh, I appreciate it.
All right? Thank you.
Just coming to work every day and just serving the public and helping the passengers out, you know, in need. You know, I've been here eight years. Just really like helping the students coming in, you know, getting them, getting them ready for their career.
Is Sean here?
Yep.
Or Stanley, I'm sorry.
Sean, if you stand up.
To Sean. And next, we'd like to recognize Stanley Thorns from our contractor Keolis. And again, Francis has a video.
Thank you, M.J. Now, we're celebrating an operator from Keolis, Stanley Thorn. Stanley Thorn, actually, just a bit like our operator from MV, what great jobs our operators are doing in keeping our youth safe. Saw a young boy this time that was in distress and actually stopped the bus, helped and contacted Metro to make sure that the young boy was, was safe. And we'll have White Cliff Mudambi, our manager of Fixed Route, present him with the Crystal Bus. So let's watch.
Hey, Stanley. Hi. Hi. We're here to present to you the Crystal Bus for helping a young boy a few weeks ago that was lost. Yeah, so thank you for caring and your dedication to service.
Yes, my name is Stanley Thorns. I've been a Keolis operator for about nine and a half years. Come in every day, try to do the best job that I can to the best of my ability, as safe as possible. Try to look out for those in my community as much as I possibly can. And I do really appreciate the award that I was given from RTC, Keolis, as well, and appreciation for my service. I really do appreciate it and thank you very much.
Yes.
Is Stanley here?
Yeah, Mr. Thorns, he was not able to make it today. But I'll tell you, Sean, thank you very much. Sean, Sean and Stanley, this is an example. They keep our community moving. They do with heart and thoughtfulness every single day. And they, we just can't thank them enough for their service. So thank them.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
If I might, M.J., when we do those films, just for a brief moment, can they have the permission of your leadership, take their masks off? Because once we're through this, I don't know who they are because they're masked.
We'll do. Yes, yes, Mayor, we'll do.
So just a one snippet.
You've got it.
Thank you.
As part of our commitment to cycling and safety, we participated in the Bike Safety and Maintenance Event last month, hosted by the City of Henderson, the Southern Nevada Bicycle Coalition and Bicycle Transit Systems. Cyclists of all skill levels attended a three-part presentation at Heritage Park, beginning with a bike safety discussion led by avid cyclists, followed by skills course training exercise and wrapping up with a one-mile bike ride. Many thanks to Chairwoman March and Mayor Protem Bridges for supporting this community safety event. Mayor, she actually showed up in her pink electric bike. And her pink jacket was awesome, awesome. So thank you. And that concludes your CEO report.
Thank you, M.J. Any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, I'll turn it back to Phil Jackson.
Thank you, Vice Chair. The next item on the agenda is to receive the Nevada Department of Transportation Director's Report by Director Swallow.
Director Swallow.
Hi, good morning. I just wanted to say how appreciative I am that you recognize the operators of the system. I mean, as a transit rider, I appreciate how they get us there and they do care. And they, the conversations you see as people get on and struggle, which it's easy, but sometimes if you're a new rider, there's challenges. And I just really appreciate the recognition you give for the operators who keep us getting to where we need to go. All right, safety. As a state, we closed the month of November with 349 lives lost on Nevada's roads. It's a 20% increase since last year. It's a 25% increase since 2019. So what does that mean? Since last year, that 20% increase represents 57 people across the state as a whole that lost their lives. If you ever tried to count up to 57, you might miss a person or two, especially if you're trying to count people in an auditorium. There's roughly 57 of us here in this room today. And I say roughly because I counted that section like three times and I kept getting different numbers. But we're like, there's 57 of us here in this room today. And so think about that. That's a lot of lives lost on our roads. In Clark County alone, it's 36 lives more this year than last year. 209 so far. That's as of the end of November. It is, I think I said last month, I don't, yeah, I said last month, it's the deadliest year in the past decade. The deadliest year prior to this, I think, was 317. So we're already 30 over that. And we haven't, and that doesn't include any fatalities in December. And I know we've already seen several. Southern Nevada saw pedestrian fatalities increase 3%. Bicycle fatalities increased 33%. Motorcycle deaths have climbed 48% year-over-year. And scooter mopeds are at 500%. You can see on the slide, across the state, impairment and speeding are again the top causes of fatal crashes. And so the crash I'm going to talk about from last month was the day after Thanksgiving. It was a speed-related crash. It took the life of one person in a single-car crash. But I do know that Thanksgiving weekend, there were multiple crashes that were multiple cars, multiple fatalities. So this was just one, just one car. The driver of a Burgundy Chrysler 300 was reportedly traveling southbound on Hollywood at a high rate of speed when they lost control on the Turtle Hill Road. The vehicle crossed into the northbound lanes of Hollywood and struck, should note, they crossed into the northbound lane. So we're lucky nobody else was impacted. And struck a large utility bowl on the west side of Hollywood. With such impact, it caused the car to split into two pieces. The driver was pronounced dead at the scene. Crash remains under investigation. But we think about not just the people who die, but everyone that they're related to, whether it's family, whether it's found family, their friends. It impacts us as a community. And, and I just want to remind everyone that it's the holiday season. So when we're getting, we're excited, we want to get to where we want to go, but do it at the speed limit, not at 5, 10, 15, 20. And remember to always drive sober. So slow down, drive sober. The roads are wet and will be wet today. So think about that, too. That just adds another complicating factor. All right. I-15 at State Line. I'm so excited. Who saw the press release on Sunday? Like, this is amazing. And so I am super excited to report. We've been talking about this for a long while. I think, I think it was in July or August. I remember talking to M.J. I don't remember if I said it to you. But I'm like, we're going to come back and we're going to tell you what we're doing. And I didn't realize I was going to come back in December and say we had had such a great opportunity. Like, we've, we've broken that logjam and, you know, and really are having some really productive conversations. So I'm excited to chat a little bit about that. So as, if you didn't see the press release on Sunday, the governors of Nevada and California, Sisalac and Newsome, did a press conference to announce that California will be doing the work to allow for hard-shoulder running, so creating a third lane from State Line to the Ag Station in the spring and hopefully opening summer. So they have committed to doing that. That is an interim solution, we know that. But we're going to get a good idea of how well, what the impact of that is. Does it change? Does, you know, and so I'm excited to announce that. And I guess I didn't announce it, they announced it on Monday, but just to celebrate that. It is being funded with California dollars and it is a really good first step. And so we are working with them. We have weekly meetings with them. It's us, it's the California Ag Department. It's FAST. So when I say us, it's us, it's N dot, it's FAST. And we're meeting weekly to figure out what needs to be done to make sure that we get that open as soon as possible. On top of that, we, in Nevada, are looking at the things that we need to do to make sure that that's successful. So for one, right now, the third lane drops at the off-ramp to Primm. We're going to have to figure out how to fit that third lane through to make sure that there's a way to connect on Sundays and Mondays to that third lane. We're also looking at some other improvements, operational improvements we may be able to do on other days, too. For instance, ramp metering for the on-ramp at Primm, the southbound on-ramp. So we are looking at lots of different things we can do. Working with California, I'm really excited to say, I mean, we have been working with them for some time. And it's great to see that we finally have gotten to a place where there might be a first step at the solution while we work on figuring out what the longer-term solutions are. And then, speaking of that, speaking of longer term, we just kicked off again our I-15 Mobility Alliance. So Nevada leads the I-15 Mobility Alliance. We've had this alliance for years. It had fallen somewhat dormant while we went through an agreement rehash and we needed to get all four states to sign back up on it. And so we just re-kicked it off. It's with us, California, Arizona and Utah. Because I-15 is a critical corridor, not just between us and California, but all the way up. When there are challenges on I-15, and I can think about, I think it was December, January 2019, 2020, we had some snowfall and California and Arizona both closed as you were to leave south from Nevada. And so it's important that Utah is part of this partnership. So we can talk to them about if there's an opportunity for the trucks to wait in, in Utah, it's better than they all get here. And now we're trying to figure out where to, where to have all the trucks parked because they can't go further or they're stuck on I-15. So it's a critical partnership. On the slide, you can see some of the things that we're doing. And one of the main things is we're updating along the corridor, the I-15 projects of significance. Things that all four states can agree are what's most critical that we deliver. We're working on continuing our partnership and collaboration. I believe there's over 90 partners to this alliance, although the alliance is the four states at the top. And we're also going to be looking at how we can work together as an alliance on grant supports and proposals. Early on, when this alliance was first created, I think we all, four states, submitted on a grant and were successful in getting a grant to help deliver some of the early projects. And so we're going to continue. And I'm excited that the alliance has kicked off again. I'm excited that we're going to see some changes on I-15 in the nearer term. Yes, I know it's spring or summer, but good news on all fronts when it comes to I-15. All right, sustainable funding study. We're skipping this month. We did a whole lot of work in November and our consulting team is doing some more work. In November, we looked at what those funding principles are. I talked a little bit about those, I think, leading into the November meeting. So financial sustainability, flexible use of the revenue equity, making sure that we're thinking about not just the types of users, but also all of the users, all the socioeconomic pieces of equity, as well as EVs versus bikes versus internal combustion engines. So we're looking at all of that. We're looking also at near-term viability versus long-term viability. There may be some changes that we can do today that help bridge the gap while we look at the longer-term solutions. Our consulting team is now looking at, now that we have those principles, they're looking at 30 different funding mechanisms and weighing them against those principles to say, this, raising the gas tax, for instance. It might meet short-term viability, but it's not long-term viability. So they're looking at that and they're looking at equity. And like, gas tax has some equity challenges. So they're looking at all of these different funding mechanisms that might be on the table, letting us know how they rate according to our principles. And then, in January, we'll start having those conversations. We're looking at, in March and April, doing the voting on what the recommendations will be that we provide to the legislature. All of those meetings are open meetings. So if anybody wants to check them out, we encourage you. And we're also interested in comments. I should note that we're also starting a roadshow in January. I think will be the first one where we talk, do official presentations. One will be to our state board. Then we'll come here to the RTC and we'll start having more official conversations so that everybody knows what we're doing and they have the option to weigh in and they know what they're weighing in on. And then, lastly, I wanted to just give an update on I-515. I know this project is painful as we work on making sure that that, those bridges continue to meet our needs while we work on the long-term project. So beginning tomorrow, Friday, December 10th, at 12:01. So beginning tonight at midnight, Las Vegas, the Las Vegas Boulevard off-ramp from southbound I-515 will be closed for three weeks. So just the, starting tonight, the Las Vegas Boulevard off-ramp from southbound I-15 will be closed for three weeks. I'm just saying that again because I want to make sure everybody heard it. Because I know it's going to be painful and it's painful to close these ramps during the holiday season. But the epoxy that we're using on the ramps is actually, needs to be applied during colder temperatures. And often you hear us talk about how pavement needs to be done in the summer when it's hot. In this case, the epoxy actually needs to be done in colder temperatures. And we want to make sure that we do it right so we don't have to close it again in the future. So coinciding with the closure, though, we are reopening the Casino Center ramp from southbound I-15. In preparation for the ramp reopening and impending work on the Boulevard ramp, southbound I-515 will be reduced to one lane overnight for two evenings this week. The first closure was last night and the second closure will be tonight. But it will reopen by 5:00 a.m. tomorrow morning. I should note that if anything changes on that, we do all the announcements via all of the social media. And it could because it's raining. So if anything changes, we'll make sure to put the announcements out. And then the crews will continue with the seismic retrofit and bridge deck rehabilitation of the viaduct and ramp structures as part of the $40 million project. It's about 33% complete and is scheduled to wrap up at the end of next year. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Director Swallow. Any questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, I'll turn it back to M.J.
Thanks, Vice Chair. Next on the agenda is to approve your consent agenda, which consists of items 5 through 24, can be taken in one motion.
All right. Any questions or comments from the board regarding the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Moving forward on the consent agenda through 24.
Thank you, Mayor. There's a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor? Aye.
Barone, aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. M.J.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I'm 25, so receive a presentation on the City of Las Vegas and Clark County Maryland Parkway Corridor Transit Oriented Development Plans. I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Daniel Fizikas, who is our principal transportation planner for the presentation.
Thank you, M.J. Thank you, M.J. Daniel Fizikas, for the record. This morning, staff is going to provide you final deliverables to the Maryland Parkway Corridor Transit Oriented Development Plan, or TOD plan, for the City of Las Vegas and Clark County. So, brief background, the City of Las Vegas and RTC were recipients of a $300,000 grant from the Federal Transit Administration back in 2018. That grant was going to look at TOD opportunities within the City of Las Vegas along the proposed BRT route within the City of Las Vegas. Soon after that award, the Clark County and RTC worked together to develop a similar initiative for the Maryland, for Maryland Parkway in Clark County, so Sahara Avenue down to Russell Road along Maryland Parkway. During that time, RTC, City of Las Vegas and Clark County worked in partnership, strong partnership, to develop both plans. So even though there are two separate plans, City of Las Vegas, Clark County and RTC worked closely when it came to community engagement and stakeholder engagement. Today, we have Marco Velada from the City of Las Vegas and Greg Servin from Clark County, who can answer any questions after the presentation. Today, we do have Jay Rankin from MIG to provide the overview of the plan. Jay?
Great. Thank you, Danny, and thank you, commissioners. Really appreciate the time today. To start out, I wanted to let you know we're going to keep this really brief. It's an overview. I'm not getting into the details of the plans, but letting you know the process of how we got there. Both plans have been adopted by their respective jurisdictions, the City of Las Vegas and by Clark County. And so, as Danny pointed out, this was a great partnership, teamwork across the board, both amongst the jurisdictions, with RTC, MIG, the firm that I am with and the lead, but joined by a great local and national team in support, looking at economics, transportation, land use, built form, all these different pieces that go into transit-oriented development. So what is transit-oriented development, you may ask, or TOD, as we refer to it pretty frequently? Transit-oriented development really is this idea of leveraging transit investment. That has to do with really kind of two key parts. One is looking at the investment in transit and making sure that we're putting as many people in close proximity to that transit investment as possible to increase ridership and make sure we're getting a great return on investment. The other piece is we're typically making large investments in the community with these transit investments, whether that be BRT or light rail or other sorts of transit investment, particularly in a corridor like this. And so we want to take advantage of that as we're making changes, making sure that we're creating the greatest place possible, making that walkable, making sure there's a lot of amenities for existing residents, leveraging the existing place and also augmenting and enhancing that. So the plan, or the plans, I should say, for the TOD really was looking at all the work that had gone into really was looking at all the work that had gone into thinking about the Maryland Parkway Corridor over the course of really nearly two decades now and really trying to catalyze that moving forward. It's in parallel with the design process for the actual transit facility in the corridor itself. So thinking about the properties that abut the right-of-way as well as within a quarter mile or a half a mile, depending on which stations we're looking at. And I'll mention that in just a second. So the goals and objectives of the plan, as I mentioned already, was, were to really enhance and make a more walkable and vibrant environment for existing residents and businesses as well as attracting new residents and businesses, stitching together those existing assets and new destinations. Equitable TOD was a really key piece. We've learned from other communities that may be actually 10, 20 years ahead of us in terms of some of these high-performance transit networks, that sometimes the people who were actually intending of serving with these types of investments are displaced because we didn't have the right strategies in place or didn't think about the fact that with new investments, sometimes costs rise and we kind of push people out that are actually transit reliant. And so we wanted to make sure that we're putting strategies in place, learning from those other places, as well as some early examples here in Las Vegas and the Valley to create equitable TOD. And then finally, trying to revitalize and catalyze development, not only along this corridor, but creating a model for other transit corridors around the region. Our community engagement and stakeholder advisory component of the plan was, really had a wrench thrown into it. We had our first set of meetings in person in January of 2020. And right as we were about to do our second set in March, everything kind of hit the fan with COVID and the pandemic. But we got really creative, working with the jurisdictions, working with different community partners. We had bilingual outreach, excuse me. And we looked at print materials, mobile-friendly options, targeted outreach to property managers. We reached out to HOAs, neighborhood representatives to really get the word out in as many creative ways as possible, using community facilities. We actually did geo-targeting with some of our social media outreach, which was really effective in certain stages of the process. And really sort of honed in on this idea that one avenue is not going to work for everybody, particularly in a pandemic, even outside of a pandemic. So really created a lot of different options to get as much community input as possible. So the project elements, actually, in addition to the plans, also included an existing conditions analysis, a market ready, ready analysis. So looking at the market conditions, which, the entire corridor obviously is not created equal. So which areas, was there already development interest? Which areas needed maybe some planning or incentives to create development interest? And how do we work with the existing property owners and businesses there? Looking at a workforce housing plan to ensure that we have all types of kind of big A affordable, small A affordable workforce housing and a variety of options for people. So looking at the housing mix and price points. A value capture toolkit to make sure that with this large public investment, that it's not just the, you know, private interests where their pockets are being lined, that the public is benefiting as well. And so looking at everything from how do we provide new neighborhood-serving amenities near these stations to how is there some sort of revenue generation beyond just the fares that would be collected along the corridor? And then a performance measures template as well that is basically how do we measure our success moving forward? Ensure that we're really seeing the transformation that we anticipate. So the priority focus areas, we did an assessment in the entire corridor, all the planned stations. We looked at a half a mile radius around each of the stations in the City of Las Vegas, largely because there's a more intact street grid. So they're more connected. And so the impact of the transit is actually, in fact, greater in those types, sorts of environments. And that's been documented in the literature. And then along the Clark County portion, a quarter mile radius. And again, that's because there's a less connected street grid, a less connectivity. But we ultimately then honed in on three stations in the City of Las Vegas portion and four stations in the Clark County portion that you can see on the screen there. And so then each of the, those stations or focus areas actually got a TOD plan. We ended up assembling those and creating one kind of plan report for each jurisdiction. But within each plan for each focus area, it included a focus area context section. It had key recommendations with graphics and materials, looking at different TOD types, looking at development types and approaches, thinking about how to fit those into the existing context, but also kind of push us a little further towards this transit-oriented development vision. Future land uses, community amenities, included priority projects as well as a detailed implementation strategy that, in this example, looked at a variety of housing options. We also looked at streetscape improvements outside of the corridor, actually getting people to the corridor. It's, it's great to have Maryland Parkway be, you know, this transit-friendly place, but if we don't think about that first and final mile you've probably heard about, you know, we're not going to achieve the level of success that we intend. And so the next steps, as Danny pointed out, we have Marco and Greg here from the city and the county respectively. The City of Las Vegas, as you all know, recently adopted the 2050 Master Plan. And the county is in the process of finalizing the transformed Clark County Master Plan. Both jurisdictions really hinge their, or tie their growth strategies around accommodating hundreds of thousands of new residents over the next 20 to 30 years on this idea of modest, you know, densification, particularly around transit, so transit-oriented development. And they're now working on the zoning and other regulations, ordinances to support that. And several of those will be put in place next year. And so the adoption timeline, last slide here. We reached out to a couple of the town advisory boards in early August, met with the County Planning Commission, Board of County Commissioners back in August. City Planning Commission made a recommendation to the city for adoption in November of 2017. And now we're in front of you today on December 9th. So with that, I am available and the other partners are available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Questions or comments from the board?
All right, I had a question for you. Has there been an effort yet to reach out to the, the landowners along Maryland Parkway and/or developers who might be interested in transit-oriented development? Yes, yeah, as part of our process, we had reached out to property owners, some specific properties, looking at opportunities if they're vacant or maybe they're actually undeveloped properties, things like that, or a very auto-oriented pattern where there's, you know, very large parking lots. And so those were actually targeted specifically. But then we did do sort of calls to larger business groups and looking at that TOD component. And then I'm pretty darn sure that as part of the design process, there's also outreach to those specific property owners and businesses. So they're being engaged in a couple of different facets.
Okay, great. Mayor?
Thank you. Great report. Could you answer for the general information of the public why we or you have arrived at the BRT rather than rail? We get calls all the time and it's always rail, rail. I know the answer, but I'm not sure the public does.
Yeah, I may ask, David, do you mind chiming in on that?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, this, this is separate and above from what we did as part of the environmental assessment. That was the process that really led to the decision of the bus rapid transit versus the light rail. And I think the key component of that was the financial ability for us to be able to support the ongoing operations and maintenance, you know, 20 years into the future with a, with a light rail system.
Well, and two, if I'm not in the right spot, but two, it's something that we can address more rapidly than 20, 30, 40 years out, where many of us won't even still be here and have the ability to enjoy it. So it's funding, funding, funding. That really, if you have a great idea, if you can't fund it, it remains an idea. So just wanted to be sure because we get a lot of calls. And one other question, the future connectivity of what's on the plan going to the airport?
Yeah, so it terminates at Russell currently, but maybe, David, you want to elaborate on exploration of that connection, too?
Yeah, sure. So the route does go to the airport with the, with the bus rapid transit option, not only to the airport, but extends south from the airport to our South Strip Transit Terminal, like it does today with the Route 109 service.
Okay, that's the 109 service. So if anybody's listening, please know that you don't have to call. There is a route to the airport, both from the south as well as going north. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments, Mayor. I'll just comment, and maybe MJ, you can chime in on this. When we were in DC a few months ago, talking to transit officials, this whole concept between BRT and light rail, I think they made it pretty clear that the preferred option right now is, is BRT.
Yeah, Commissioner Jones is correct. We had an opportunity to speak with the, the new FT Administrator, Nuria Jones, and she was very pleased to hear that we were in fact investing in bus rapid transit. She found it to be much more competitive. We, we, that was the feedback we received. So we were excited to know that we were on the right track.
All right, any other questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, I'll turn it back to MJ.
Thank you, Vice Chair Jones. The next item is to appoint the members of the CEO Evaluation Committee.
All right. And thank you. I, with regards to the flood control, we had identified members of the committee and alternate. Is there anyone who is interested differently than what we voted on in flood control?
I would move we accept the same committee for the continuity.
Thank you very much, Mayor. We'll go ahead and adopt the, the same individuals from flood control, which would be Mayor March, myself, Councilman Galt, and Councilman Barone, with Mayor Goodman as the alternate. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Barone, aye.
All right, motion carries. MJ.
Thank you. Item 27 is our standing legal item and there are no items to discuss. So we can move on to your last agenda. Item number 28, which is to conduct your final citizens' participation period.
Thank you. This is the second time set aside for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak to the board, now is your opportunity. Please come forward to the microphone to provide your comments and state your name for the record.
Thank you again, Chair Justin Jones, Alita Dupree. For the record, she and her. Good meeting. You know, I like in-person meetings. I go to a lot of them on Zoom all over the place. And I'm glad that you reopened because you just can't get your staff-related questions answered on Zoom. So five years I've had this app. I've been using it since it started, I think, pretty much. It works, it works. It really works. And I like the new bus readers. They're put on the right side and shaded because sometimes the glare from those other bus readers, it impacts being able to scan the QR code. And sometimes it gets in my face. So I look forward to seeing these new bus readers. And I'm getting used to this new Charleston Rapid Skip Stop Service. I've used the concept in other cities. So I'm getting my feet wet with it. 10 minutes is great at the major stops, but I usually use the minor stops. So it's 20 minutes. So I want to see if we can increase that a little more. Sahara is fortunately back to 15. And that's my major route of choice. And I'm not sure where the strip is, but you can never have too much service on the strip because it gets crowded on the strip. And sometimes I use the monorail. I have a $20, 20 ride ticket for the monorail. And it's, it's nice and I always get a seat. So it's important I try to get a seat. And I, I think we just have to do more about trying to get to the airport. I, I've been going to the airport. And sometimes I use the bus, but with this operator shortage, the 108 only runs every 30 minutes. One time I missed, one missed, I waited a lot longer. And getting to the airport requires you be timely. I haven't missed a flight, but I don't want to. I try to allow lots of time. So I think we have to do better on getting to the airport. I'm going there after this meeting. So I certainly want to see us get to work with the, with the paper ticketing and moving past that. It's showing its age. It's, it's really causing some frustrations and holdups on the buses, especially if a fare box goes out and we're sitting in the Bonneville Station or even a bus going out of service because the fare box goes out. I think we can do better. It won't happen today. We got to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other individuals in the audience who wish to provide public comment?